Strike that for the person. Good evening, everyone. It is 7:02. Welcome to the special meeting, August four, August 14, 2025. Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please? So we'll... Trustee Harrod in second.
Second.
Second, trustee Aykona. All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, could I get a motion? I'm gonna read this resolve. The Hope High Central School of Board of Education appoints Lisa Porco as meeting chair pro tem for the August 14, 2025 special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Uh huh. Second.
Trustee Carraway, trustee Travis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lisa. Keep it real, Lisa. Come on. Alright, so then we'll go right into the superintendent's report. And Mr. Frank Miller, Frank.
Good evening. I know it's getting pretty morning and night. I just want to start off by thanking the board for their support, their confidence, their faith in, you know, myself. I'm honored, I'm humbled by it. As I said, I graduated from Maybach and, you know, when I was asked to do this position, it did take me long to say yes, only because of the affinity I have for the Maybach experience. I've always said that I bleed blue and gold, and I think this is kind of my last stop. And I take it very seriously and personally, and I'm gonna do the best job that I can. And so I'd like to thank the board and President Martin and Vice President Lucy Masafra and the rest of the board for your support. What you see is what you get. I'm gonna do the best that I can. I'm gonna be very visible. We've already sent out a number of communications the last week, and that's what we're gonna continue to do. And we're gonna communicate with our community, with our parents, as well as our students. We have some big things coming up, and, you know, my vision is to make sure that every student that we have has the opportunity to be as good as they or she can be. And we need to find out, if it's not working, what we need to do to make it work. If it's staff development, if it's discussion, if it's holding people accountable, I'm all for that. I have the courage to make decisions. At the same time, I am a people person, and I do strive to show people that if I hold myself accountable, then I can hold other people accountable. And that's where I'm about. I don't want to bore you too much, but I do have a number of things I need to thank a few people. One was Andrea Messick. I mean, I, you know, she's gonna be invaluable, believe me. You've heard me say I want to communicate, I want to be transparent, I want to throw some things out, I want to promote all the positive things that we do in Maybach. Trust me, she's gonna be in my office a lot, because she's the person that communicates. And she's the one that's been so awesome with the letters and different things, and, you know, if I misspell a word, she's right there. So I can't thank her enough. The next person is Ben August. You know, I get here, next thing you know, they give me a laptop, they give me a computer, and I'm supposed to understand all this stuff. Oh, that's great. And, you know what? He's been awesome. I mean, like I said, I can't thank him enough for the things that he's done. I mean, he's amazing. Tim Walsh, we've already, you know, been involved with a number of things. I think I kind of surprised him, because I asked him for something on first day, and he asked me, "Who are you?" I explained it to him, but he's been great. And anything I've asked him, listen, you know, superintendent has to be tied into the head of facilities. I mean, those are the things that people see. And, you know, we want our facilities inside and out to look as good as they can be and make them as safe as possible. So I can't, like I said, I can't thank him enough. Next week with Tim and the leadership of, you know, some of the board members who will walk through the facilities outside, starting here up to the high school, the middle school, Lakeview, former road, Austin Road, and just kind of see, you know, what needs to be fixed. That's what we're gonna do next week. So, like I said, I can't thank him enough. The staff that's been in the Falls and the staff that I've been involved with at either the middle school, the high school, you know, from custodians right on through secretaries, everybody's been so welcoming. I mean, I went into an office the other day, and the first thing somebody said is, "What are you doing here?" Can I help you with something? I said, "No, I'm just sitting here to see what's going on." Isn't that what people do? That's what people do. I want people to come to this job happy. I want them to, you know, want to come to work. We don't want to lose people along the way. We want Maybach to be the place that people want to stay and feel like I do after working here for close to 50 years. Okay? The affinity I have for, you know, I bleed blue and gold, you cut my arm. They did once, and it was red. It's okay. So, like I said, I can't thank them enough. I met with all the administrators the first day. Just happened Dr. Lawrence had a meeting set up. It made it a little easier for him, I had to go chase him. And that was the opportunity that I had to give my vision, my philosophy, how I'm gonna be. They know that they can count on me, I'm very supportive. At the same time, I, you know, there's a lot that I expect from them. And so that meeting kind of gave me an opportunity to kind of present myself and my views and my values. Lastly, and then I'll get on to the things that we've done, the cabinet that we've been working with, from Dr. Lawrence to Jen Patillo to Alyssa, you know, I never had a money person, now I got a money person. And she's awesome, and I did tell her, there's gonna be a couple times, I might come to you and ask for something, and if you don't think it's possible, tell me no. And then I'll say, "Come on, Alyssa, you can do it." And she's gonna say, "No, you, we can't." And that's what I want from her. Okay, Dr. Lawrence, you know, we're gonna take a look at strategic plan, we're gonna take a look at special ed, the folder that we just got back from the group that, you know, kind of evaluated our program, the curriculum, we're gonna take a look at, you know, A through Z as far as where we are in the strategic plan and what we need to, to, you know, complete whatever we've been working on. So those are the individuals, I can't thank them enough for everything that they've done, plus my secretary, Ellen Segarra, you know, she was here. So hopefully, hopefully I didn't bore you on any of that stuff, but those people are invaluable. Can't do your job, and we've done quite a bit in the last week. Just, I'll start, you know, just some of the things. I already mentioned my vision as far as what I had. We've discussed the cell phone policy. I just handed out a couple of sheets of communication that I think has already been sent out, but tomorrow, we send out our communication to the parents and the students, as well as to the media, from Maybach News to Facebook to different, you know, avenues of, you know, advertising that cell phone policy. Do I think it's gonna work? I'm not sure. I know, I know we're gonna give it every effort. I mean, eventually it will, but, you know, we're gonna take a look at it probably monthly. The biggest thing that I'm gonna pass along to our staff is consistency. Okay? You know, some people might be too hard on it, some people might be a little too soft. I'm gonna try to find that middle. But it is worthwhile. You know, high school staff, middle school staff feel that, you know, it can be done, and I'm good with that. The elementarys, I know it will be done. It might take a little time, and we might have a little kickback in the beginning, but that's okay. We just have to make some adjustments on it. So that was that part of it. Communication is a big key. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the head of food services. It's another memo that I need to send out regarding free breakfasts, free lunch. We're also gonna discuss the dye issue as far as dyeing, you know, the various foods. The dye, you know, red dye, purple, whatever, in the foods. That was, somebody had brought that up. When they mentioned it to me, I, you know, I don't have young kids, so I, you know, they threw it out yesterday. I go, "Okay." Have to look at Matt Lawrence, "What the heck?" But it was, you know what? It was a legitimate concern, and so I have to speak about it. And tomorrow's the day we're gonna find out. I mean, we're gonna find out if it's in, if it's out. I'm not sure. Somebody said that Kelons, one of their cereals, they took it out. I'm not sure if anybody heard that. I'm not really sure. The other thing about, you know, sending out those memos as far as the cell phones and as far as the food, the various schools during the next two weeks are gonna also send out individual communication from their own school. You know, the high school staff, you know, their memo might be a little different than the elementary schools, but that's something that, you know, we're gonna do tomorrow, next week, and then probably do it two or three times before school starts. And then once school starts, at the high school, Pat Keavens will have a meeting with the ninth graders to discuss the cell phone policy, 10th graders, I think we're gonna do the same thing over at the middle school. We can't promote it enough and explain it enough, and eventually it's gonna kick in and people realize that, you know, it's something that we need to do. Like I mentioned before, I met with all of the administrators individually. I went to all of the schools. They were good enough to take me around the facilities. I can't emphasize this enough, one of the big issues, I presented this to the board, one of the big issues are the bathrooms. Okay? I know, I walked through them. Okay? I'm not a miracle worker. I wish I, you know, had all the money to fix them. It's not the place that you want to hang out, it's not the place you want to be, but the only thing that I can do right now is to make sure that they're as clean as they can be, they're as operable as they can be. That's all I can do right now. Is there any other suggestions about it? Let me have it.
I'll ask that to you.
Okay. So, I mean, that's, you know, that was a big, that was a big concern. I also met with all the union heads for various groups, and the meetings went great. And, you know, we have notes and things that they have some concerns, things that, you know, they're doing that are awesome. And so, like I said, the more I get involved, the more I hear, the better job I can do. If I don't hear it, I can't, I can't deal with it, not what I know. So they've been, like I said, they've been great. Another, another person that I, another thing that we've discussed is Troy Billions, safety, which is major as far as entrances, the back doors. You know, I went through the policy. I'm meeting with them again tomorrow. Next week, we'll be, Wednesday, we're meeting with the sheriff, we're meeting with the Cornwall Police Department. And we're gonna try to make Maybach School District as safe as it can be. Is it 1,000% safe? I like to think so. And that's what we're striving to do. You know, the things that have been put in place, the protocols that we have, I'm really impressed. Troy Billions does an excellent job with that. Now we're gonna partner with the Cornwall Police as well as the Sheriff Department, the SROs, so that we're all on the same page. And we're gonna try to use as many resources as we can. And, you know, those two agencies are, they're huge for us. Next, if we go on past the high school, you know, on one of my first and second days, you know, I had the opportunity to go on the tennis courts, and there was cracks, uneven cracks, there was grass coming through. It's just so ironic, I had seen the girls' tennis coach up in the athletic office when I was at the high school, and it kind of just gave me the impetus to, you know, go out to the tennis courts, the next thing you know. It was one of those things, and we've had this a while ago as far as the turf, where if you don't take care of it, eventually you can't use it. And we don't want to have somebody come here and say, "Listen, it's a liability, it's a safety risk." So, you know, it took it upon ourselves, you know, when we were getting the courts refurbished, as well as adding some pickleball courts to them. And that should be awesome as far as our students and our community, because pickleball nowadays is a huge activity. So I think we might be able to put, I think, eight pickleball courts on the end, two nets.
So wait, this is the tennis courts, the current site?
Yeah.
So that's gonna be done in the, within the same resurfacing project?
Right now, yeah.
I have questions about the tennis courts. Do you want me to ask now, or do you want to wait till later?
Yeah, you want to wait?
I don't know, you want to ask it now? Right now?
Okay. So for the tennis courts, in January, the facilities committee met, and Craftco came in to repair tennis courts and recommended that we did not repair them, but do a total replacement, because the cost would be prohibitive. We'd be paying the same for a replacement. So they talked about doing it if it was in, if the budget passed, then it was gonna be in Tim Walsh's facility budget. Budget did not pass. Also, April 22nd, we reduced the facilities budget by $200,000. I don't know if that impacted it, because we went from 1.9 to 5 to 1%. Our budget failed, and we had a revote in June at zero. So we had not, as far as I could see, there was no update or more communication of the tennis courts. So I'm just, I would like to know, how many bids did we get for the tennis courts? How much was a full replacement compared to what we're paying for it to be repaired? And how was the vendor selected? And this is, I also didn't hear about it until an email went to the community that it was happening.
We heard about, yeah, same thing, board members. I got it as a parent. I don't know.
So even though, how many bids did we get and who was performing the work?
We didn't get any bids. So I think, I think we needed it.
What is the total cost for this project?
Right now, $119,000.
How much is the replacement?
Close to over $300,000.
Do we have that as an estimate?
It was a, it was a suggested estimate that was given to me, to over $300,000.
By whom? Craftco in January was saying it wouldn't make sense to repair.
Well, that's, that's great. I'm just saying, what we've done, what we did, I felt as far as health and safety, okay? I didn't want to wait since school started, it's starting in two weeks, our tennis team is two weeks. I don't know if you wanted to wait and have an accident happen and then our school be liable. That's great. I didn't want to do that. And I took it upon myself to make that decision. No bids were needed. I've been here long enough to know how the process goes. Personally, I didn't do anything wrong.
I'm not saying you did anything wrong.
We're saying the policy.
I joined us on the conversation, I don't care how safety.
Like, when I was saying, we have council coming, and we could ask them further, is they can explain the whole process?
And we could talk about it with them too, but policy 7360 says anything over $20,000 has to be cut out.
Can we just, just take a gap a notch? Alyssa, can you also talk about this, because I'm sure this was done in your control?
Yeah, just explain the process.
So the vendor was on a piggyback contract, so that means you do not have to competitively bid if it's on, if it's on that type of contract, because the bidding costs essentially already happened, and you can choose to take that vendor. If it weren't a vendor that was on a piggyback contract, then you wouldn't have to, it wouldn't require you to either bid out or at least get quotes depending on the price point of the project. But it was from Sourcewell, which is a piggyback contract, so we did not need a bid.
So the point though, that there was just, just that this was done and you didn't tell us first. You didn't tell the board to bid first.
I told our president.
But why didn't you tell us?
Well, I thought my email was, was, was pretty.
Which email?
Was pretty clear.
Which email?
Well, the one that, the one that we talked about, just the, the safety and the, with the residents.
That was prior to the approval.
Okay.
Right. So you didn't tell us that this was actually being done. Customarily, we would be notified, "Hey, this is what we're gonna do," or you would ask us our input before this was done, because it does have a financial track. As Jen pointed out on the January 7th meeting, and if you look at, this is for the public, you can look at the tape where at 18 minutes into the tape, you can see that the suggestion that what came from Tim Walsh was that the vendor did say, "It's not worth it to, to just cover it up the cracks if you have enough doing it all, ripping it all up and doing it again." The other thing is, there's competing interests, right? So part of what the board does is we have to prioritize. And I think, Mike, you did ask for a list of projects and the amounts, and August 1st, that was sent to us, right? And on the list was the tennis courts with the charge. But we also got information that the former road.
Playground.
Playground is a mess. Now, I don't know if it's sectioned off.
But it's gonna be taken care of this coming week.
Wait, but Frank, the point is, and I know we're not, I don't want to show dirty laundry to everybody here, but we're just starting out, we haven't met with you yet, this is the first time we're meeting you. So it's just customary that you run it by the board first, because these are money that can be spent and within, even within a budget. And the fact that now we have other constraints on the budget, right? Due to the, to expenditures that were not expected when the budget was passed, okay? We have to, we have to prioritize. And you, customarily, you run it by the board, the entire board. And if the president should tell us ahead of time, "Hey, I'm giving you a heads up, this is what we're doing." Or usually, what we should, what I think we should do is talk about it in a meeting before the action is taken.
Well, we usually, well, I mean, I thought the, I thought the email with the project list was, was, was kind of covered, but I'll tell, I'll tell, I'll own the fact that I didn't individually reach out, you know, for, for that. I mean, I met residents over there, and you, and you heard me say, "I know, I know I had emails about it," but at the end of the day, I, I, I mean, it's, for me, it's a safety issue. I mean, I think that's what we.
But Mike, the safety issue is all around the school, that former road, so why pick that over former road?
Alyssa.
Listen.
Can we just stop for a second? I just have to say something, because your comments that the board did not approve that.
I didn't say approve. I said, "We were not notified."
Okay. So we have notified that here at the Falls, we did abatement at classrooms that were not in the list that was originally budgeted for. Were you aware of that?
It was not on the list, and I was, yes.
When we did the budget for the Falls, nothing was listed there for the Falls. But then the list we received on August 1st listed the Falls, so we didn't approve that.
But maybe it was.
But we didn't approve it. So that's the same type of thing. That was an area that needed repair for many, many years. Okay? The students come to the Fall, will not be able to play tennis on it.
Listen.
But I'm just saying, we, there were changes made from the budget. You could go and look at the list we got on the first. So I'm just, you're saying we didn't approve or weren't aware.
I did not say approve. I said the board was not notified that this action was going to be taken.
But you're not missing what I'm saying. The Falls, were you aware that we were gonna do abatement here instead of another school? Were you aware of that? Okay, so it's the same thing.
Alright, Lucy.
My friend Avery Stern was not with the work being done. The work should be done, but my problem is with the process, have we followed the process?
So it was 7360, and then from what Alyssa has explained, with the Sourcewell. Sourcewell, it's already, the bid is already, you already have the low bid. Craftco, that was their opinion. Their opinion was that the courts needed to be resurfaced. Sport Tech, who actually did the courts, resurfaced these back in 2011, under, under, I was it Jennifer Tock? And that, and that, and there's a, there's a plaque on top of the tennis courts as you walk in, that was done by Sport Tech back in 2011. So that was 15, 15 years ago. So, I mean, it was up on, it was on the update, it was in the, it was in the, in the list of stuff. I mean, you know, it came out of regular budget, and I'm sorry, if I, I'm, I'm asking, we don't go through the, we don't go through Tim's budget and ask about classrooms, we don't ask about, and we don't ask about this, we don't ask about that.
But we all sent out an email straight to the public like that. When I have to shield community members coming to me, listen, go ahead, you can finish them off.
No, you had to send something out, because residents use the courts on a daily basis and in the evening. So you had to send something out there to keep people, just to let people know that they were, that they were gonna be out of commission for a couple weeks.
But shoot us a quick email, even if it's like an hour before, because I'm generally shielding community members coming to me saying, "We're spending this X, Y, and Z. Did you know about this?" And I'm like, "This is the first I'm finding out."
Well, okay, that's fine. I mean, it was in the, so, but that's fine. I, I, I do, that's fine.
Okay, I'm not, I understand. And I hear exactly what you're saying, and it, it won't happen again.
Frank, you just talked about the board going on a tour next week.
Yeah.
Has that invitation been sent out to the board?
Well, we're gonna talk about.
Lose out of the facility committee.
We're gonna talk about the dates.
I want to mention one of the.
Listen.
As far as the playground equipment, hey, you know, listen, I'm sensitive to whatever, playground, the turf field, the tennis courts, that money was already allocated, wasn't it? As far as, right?
If you look at the August 1st document, it shows the former road $37,000 allocated for the playgrounds to be repaired. If you look at that, one document, they were still determining when that work was gonna be done.
Yes, it says TBD on it.
Based on, based on when, okay, so it's the same.
So I don't know if anybody's here in former road, but is there, are kids playing on it? Or is it wrapped, is there yellow tape around it?
Well, I don't think it's completely at its service.
I've heard that they're actually playing on it, and they're avoiding those one sections.
Alright, so it's, it's, it's dangerous, but it's, so even a couple of years ago, Lakeview, they had to basically put yellow tape around it, and we had to wait, because we had to get a whole bunch of approvals, and it took almost a year, and we got the approval.
Well, Ben, the ones over at former roads, the slides at former road.
No, I understand. I did all that stuff. It's terrible, we should fix everything.
No, but the slides are having, the slides are barricaded, so the slides can't be used.
Right, so I, again, it's a tennis court, and, look, I don't play tennis, and I want every kid to play whatever they want? That's terrific, but you have to come to the board to re-prioritize. We're in a bit of, in my opinion, we're in a bit of a hole, alright? With all the outlays of cash that we're gonna be doing in the next.
Well, all I'm saying, all I'm saying is that in the past, we've kind of let Tim and, and that, that budget, that summer budget, we really don't have any, really, really.
But you have to run it by all of us.
And that's fine, that's fine, okay.
But let me say something. When you look at the budget, and from what I looked at, what we did in the 8-1, it looks like we even went over budget a little bit, possibly.
Sorry, what do you mean by 8-1?
The 8-1 school work, summer work, when I looked at all those costs you had listed in there, or Tim did, versus what was budgeted, from my good health, the budget was $971,000, it looked like we went over a million.
Yeah, but did they?
But I'm just saying, they need to come to the board and say, "Hey, we're going over." That's all I'm saying.
These are static reports on appointed targets.
I'm just trying to make a point. I'm just trying to make a point that it did go over, what do you mean?
That's not, I disagree with that interpretation, okay?
Okay. Listen, guys, points taken. Let's, can we, can we move on? I think Alyssa explained it well. Go ahead, Frank, please.
One of the last things, you might have heard me pre-board meeting regarding special ed. Kind of dear to my heart as far as trying to fill in some of the gaps and trying to, trying to make sure that all of our students get all of the services they need and try to eliminate any confusion along the way. I'm meeting with the director tomorrow with Dr. Lawrence. And, you know, what we need to do is make sure that all of our administrators know exactly what their duties are and what their responsibilities are. And hopefully we solidify some things, we pass it along down to our staff, our special ed staff, pro tem, PT, the speech teachers, because I think there's a few gaps here, and I think it's because of people leaving and not having a clear direction. And I'm hoping that, you know, like I said, I hope we can solidify that a little bit. Tomorrow's a start. Next week, I'm meeting with the SEPTO group, you know, I need to hear more things. If I do anything, it'll be fixed and helping that special ed program.
Have you met with the new, the newly appointed special ed director?
Tomorrow.
Oh, okay, great.
You know, tomorrow, I'm meeting with Dr. Lawrence and her. She, Korean.
Alright, oh, okay.
So, you know, I heard she's terrific. I'm hoping that she can also meet next week with the SEPTO group, because if they like me, the more she hears, the better.
Officially, she starts September 1st, so I appreciate that she's coming in on her own time.
Right. And you know what? She's, you know, everything I heard from her, she's awesome. And, you know, I'm expecting, you know, her leadership to filter right on down through, so all of our teachers know exactly what to expect. And, you know, like I said before, we'd like to think we're gonna hold them accountable to do all the things that they're supposed to, and find out, listen, if you're not doing, or if your delivery's a little off, then we need to figure out why. I don't know if it's the services or how we deliver things, but some is not jiving the way I'm expecting. But I think we're gonna clear up a few things, and tomorrow's a start. Next week, SEPTO is another start. I probably will be every, every. Uh, I probably will be every, every time that Septo meets, I probably will be there also. And, you know, I wanna listen to their concerns, you know, I, I.
Are you meeting with the board, the Septo board?
Septo, whoever the leadership is at the various schools, uh, and then I'll meet with whoever's on, on their committees. Right now, I'm just starting with leadership.
It's, it's a board, I, I was the president of Septo a couple of years ago, so yes, yeah, it's, it's a board.
Well, it's happening, you're Jillian, and Jillian is the president.
Well, I'm hoping that they can come next week, if not, and they can't make it during the day, then we'll have to do something at night. Like I said, I just, I just wanna hear what they have to say, I mean, that's the, like, you know, I've been here, you know, a week, so. The more I hear, the better it is, I mean, I heard from different groups, you know, can't just make things up. They tell me something, I listen, what we can fix, we try to fix right away, what we can't, we talk about it, and we take it from there. Uh, I'm also meeting with April Lumich, who's in charge of the counseling program. Uh, mental health, emotionally, socially is a big deal to me. Uh, you know, I'm gonna be with all the psychologists, I hope, all the social workers, anybody that has any involvement with, whether it's our kids, as well as our staff. Because nowadays, it's not just our young people that, you know, could have some, uh, some situations, I mean, listen, life is a little tough. You know, so we need to be aware of that, and we need to be aware if any of our teachers need help, just as well as we need to be aware of any of our kids. Excuse me, if they need any help along the way. And I think, uh, you know, my calendar, if you saw looking at my calendar, it's starting to get full up. And I don't have problems going to meetings and listening and, and, and doing, making decisions. Um, yeah, so I think they're invaluable, the things that they've done. Uh, yesterday, we had another meet and greet, uh, we heard a number of questions yesterday that I thought were awesome, tonight was the same thing. And, uh, like I said, what you see is what you get, I'm honest. I don't, I don't have any, not political, I don't have any hidden agendas, my only agenda is to do the best that I can for this district. And when I leave here, I want people to say, you did everything possible to make this place as good as it can be and make that that I have always been accustomed to. And, uh, that's all, I mean, I, I think we did quite a bit in the last five days, I think you have five days, I think six days. Uh, we're working tirelessly, uh, the things that are happening behind the scenes are getting our schools ready. And me, I, I can't wait for school to start, uh, I'm even amazed at some of the things that we've been doing. And, uh, like I said, I congratulate all the people that I've been working with and, uh, all the parents that have, you know, and, uh, sending great messages and asking me questions. It hasn't been a question that, uh, has been off, has been off the board. The question has been legitimate, and, uh, I appreciate all of that, so, and that's my message, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent Neely. Do we have communicated, Lisa, any comment on the agenda items?
Jennifer, Monica, will speak on agenda items about spending decisions? Is Jennifer here?
Yes. Uh, Mr. President, board members, thank you, um, to the superintendent, welcome, appreciate your sentiment tonight. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions with regards to the spending decisions, obviously, part of the discussion already started about, um, the tennis courts. As a parent, listen, I'm a sport parent, I appreciate facilities, but didn't seem like that was the most important thing that we needed to start on right now, given we've just had a pretty hostile year of lots of battles about priorities in this district. Um, and to be able to find money for tennis and not find money for our bathrooms, it is a little bit, um, the optics of that, I think, weren't great going out to parents. Um, I would, I'm glad that you're going to see the bathrooms, uh, we did have actually a way to pay for the bathrooms, it was the budget that some folks in this room campaigned against, so now we can't fix them. Um, but to me, that would be a higher priority than tennis courts. Um, I also just wanna point out, I'm also on the Health and Wellness Committee, and while food diets is an issue for some people, I think, more importantly, the opportunity to have free lunch. Uh, for students that's now available is, is a priority in making sure the quality of the food that we provide to students, um, and that students get the lunch breaks that they need. And get the quality and quality of food that they need is kind of, I think, the most important thing that we spend a lot of time talking about there, uh, as well as mental health, so I'm glad that's a priority, um, to you. So I think, um, you know, understanding the, uh, that, you know, how the decisions are made on what we're spending money now, when we're in a situation that we have, uh, limited resources. Um, and how we're choosing to spend our money, there's a lot of people paying a lot of attention. And I'd love to know how the bathroom could be deemed an emergency, much like the tennis courts are deemed an emergency, so that money could be somehow freed up to be able to improve bathrooms, so that'd be a good question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Can I sit on the agenda items?
Okay, um, Alyssa, on the board discussion of tax mark options, Alyssa Murray.
Okay, so last week, um, I sent an email out to the board to kinda update them on where we are with our audit. So this is the period of time where our auditor, our auditing firm, PK, PK for Connor Davies, they just came in for a week, they were doing preliminary things, so the audit's not finalized. But based on the findings, um, so far, uh, we do have excess, uh, fund balance of two million dollars, and I'm gonna explain to you how we got to that point. So before we could decide that there was extra money per se left over, uh, we already allocated to the reserves that the board approved a couple, uh, four weeks ago. Meaning that we allocated to the teacher retirement reserve, and this is pending the finalized audit, so it hasn't actually happened, but this is the plan. Uh, the teacher retirement reserve, the employee retirement reserve, and the reserve for employee benefits and accrued liabilities. Uh, so again, when we allocate to reserves, there's limitations, uh, by law, that you can't just put as much money as you want to them. Every, every reserve has its own, um, well, legality and limits to it. Uh, on top of that, we allocated the money from the sale of property, uh, on the board agenda tonight is the tax reduction reserve, we talked about that in June as well. Uh, that was the best fit for that money, uh, because that's the only reserve it can go into, uh, so that's the one point two million dollars. Um, and then, because we had about over ten million dollars in the tax surcharge reserve, uh, but we had the settlement from the case from the reservoir in New York City. Uh, we have to take eight point five million dollars out of it. Um, so with all of that being said, uh, we're allowed, uh, by state, state mandated, allowed to have four percent of unappropriated fund balance after everything's all said and done. So on top of that four percent, we have two million that we need to make a decision on, we can't just let it per se sit there, there has to be action taken. Um, and if anyone has any questions, feel free to jump in, go ahead.
Alyssa, the TRS, how much are we putting in the TRS?
So for TRS, we are putting in one point one million, uh, so that's based on, you can only put up to two percent of your teacher's salaries, uh, total into the reserve at a time.
So we have the two million, so we still have to determine what to do with, you put in one point one, and the ERS, how much is going into ERS?
Five point five, so it's based on, you can put three to five times your actual, um, ERS, uh, bill into that reserve.
And then the EBLR?
EBLR, yep, so EBLR is based off the calculation, uh, so the way, what you would use EBLR for, uh, which is employee benefits and accrued liabilities, is based on, uh, when you have retirees or anyone who, uh, leaves the district. Uh, you can pay, you can pay their sick time, anything that's in their contract, their, their CBA, uh, you could pay out of that. So we put five point one, and that's based on when we run from the financial, uh, program, uh, if you took everyone's compensated, it's called compensated absences, and you're allowed to use that money for that.
But the five point five and five point one includes that eight point five million that you're moving out of the tax.
Yeah, so, so, so.
That, that doesn't, so where you take the tax serve out, how much did we put into the ERS? I'm just trying to get an idea, the money's left over from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, because you said we currently have two million right now, we have to decide with. What was the other, what was the total that we anticipated is gonna be left over from twenty-four, twenty-five? You did mention the audit's not complete, but was that number around five million, is that a correct number, or was it, um?
I, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but five million, so when you mean five million, do you mean how, how much?
Appropriations report as of June thirtieth showed about five point five million, is that a correct number to approximately, pretty close?
Pretty close, yeah, so, but fund balance is created two ways, one is by, when you have from the expenditure side, if you don't spend money, so that's what you're talking about, that's left over. And then also from the revenue side, if we get, if we receive more revenue than we expected, usually interest the past couple of years, that's also fund balance, so they get added together.
Right, so I'm just saying from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, is that a correct statement, it's hovering around five million dollars?
Yes.
But that's not left over, right? That's still to be some money that needs to be used to pay bills from a prior year, right?
It's already covered, it's already covered, it's already covered, that's five million left over for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So, just to put it, well, just to put it in perspective though, it does, it sounds like a huge number, but when you have a hundred and forty-two million budget, it's not a big number. So four percent of our budget is five point eight million, uh, so that's, that's healthy, that's healthy to have four percent, because as we talked about, taxes and things of that nature, that's what we use that money for. Um, so, and again, another reason why we have, uh, it's an unusual year where we have over the four percent is because we have to take money out of the tax surcharge worry, that is a huge amount, eight point five million. And we gain one point two million from the sale of properties, so that doesn't happen every year. Um, and then on top of that, so, um, on the proposition two for the budget that did not pass, was to create a capital reserve to put this type of money in, knowing that we were gonna have a year where we're gonna have excess fund balance. Um, so.
Right.
So, so since that didn't happen, we need to make a decision, so I'm gonna go into the options of what we can do. So the first option is to do nothing, uh, not recommended, you should be cited by the Office of State Comptroller, uh, they should say we have had fiscal oversight, so really not an option like I would recommend. Uh, the second option is to, the second option is to lower the tax levy by the, the full two million, um, which would be similar, again, it's a similar process to last year, if anyone remembers. Where we lowered the tax levy around the same time period, one point six, seven million, um, so it's taking off before the tax bills go out, it takes right off the total of the, the levy. The third option, which is recommended by myself and Cabinet, uh, we spoke about this, uh, last week, is to lower the tax levy by one million, so cut it in half, what we, what our excess fund balance is. And then with the other, uh, million dollars, uh, based on, uh, what our auditor said, we could create a liability reserve, which is on the docket tonight for board, uh, for the board to possibly approve. And that, that million would cover the separation agreement, um, from the prior superintendent, and also, we have a, uh, settle, a legal, a pending litigation, uh, for a special ed case. That we possibly need money for that in. So recommendation, lower the tax levy by a million, and then put a million into a li, liability reserve. Any other questions?
The second, I'm sorry.
The second, the second option, or the second part of that?
The second, so when is the li, the liability for the separation agreement and the potential litigation with the special ed, and what's the other one? Oh, we didn't get that, yeah.
Just, that's it, that's the, that's the last option.
The second was to lower the, to lower by four million.
To do all, the whole excess fund balance to, to lower, um, the tax levy, or split in half, do some off the tax bills, and then some for the reserves.
So then Alyssa, on tonight's, um, warrant here.
Yes.
Is the million dollars is already added to this?
Yeah, so if you look at, um.
On page four.
If you look at where it says that four point eight million in the third paragraph, um, that's, that's the million plus the, uh, appropriate fund balance that we'll be talking about during the, uh, budget, the budget cycle. That adds, is added together, um, again, I put this on the board agenda, no, that's the recommendation, I can change it, I already have the other, uh, resolution approved.
Just a quick, so this is option, the third option, we'll, it's included in the consent.
Yes, so if, if we were to go with the sec, the two million on the tax warrant, I would just change out the numbers on this, uh, resolution, and I would take out the liability reserve creation.
Thank you.
Yep.
So just to ask a further question, so we were taking, I don't have it here, I'll, if I have it here, so we were taking three million, or were we taking some on?
Three point eight million.
Right, so we said that we would apply a million dollars, so shouldn't that come down, because it increased, correct?
Um, so you're applying to the reduction, so applying four point eight million to the reduction of the tax levy. So that's the appropriate fund balance plus the additional.
Okay, and that's in, and this is your recommendation, Alyssa?
Yes, and, uh, we also spoke about it in Frank, uh, off the.
And just also, with all these reserves that we'll put in, right now, our, um, reserves are about twenty-six million, so with the new appropriations, we would be around thirty-one million, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
I, I don't want the committee to get the sense that we are chock full of money. We're not, okay? Because the bathrooms were estimated, and correct me if I'm wrong, around eight million dollars potentially, we don't, we don't have, the bid is out there, correct?
Um, the bid, I, well, I'm.
I'm sorry, where, where are we in the process?
In the process, well, in terms of the process of the bathrooms, the last thing we left off was the facilities committee meetings, that we were looking over in the building condition survey. And, um, the next step was if this, the reserve was going to get approved, which it didn't.
So the ten million dollar reserve was intended to use for capital improvements, and, right?
It would be packaged with, because we already have five million dollar reserve, so.
But there's not enough money in there to do everything that Tim, Tim wanted to do, correct?
Well, not necessarily what Tim wanted to do, but the building condition survey has seventy million dollars worth of work.
Okay.
And five million dollars, um, and this is just an approximate, this isn't ex, exact.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, five million dollars, even with, say, over multiple years, is only gonna stretch to like fifteen million dollars, and that's not including taking off, uh, architect fees and construction. So it's just a small, it would be a smaller project, which would, I would assume, make priorities, you know, tighter.
Right, so, Mike. Okay, so what we, so what we always talked about doing, even when, uh, Trustee Pafara was, was on the board many years ago, um, we talked about going, going to the community and having smaller, smaller opportunities, smaller, um, uh, capital improvement plans. That we would convey to the community and then, uh, plan, budget, and then direct. So, yeah, listen, our, you've heard me say this before, our, our newest building is the middle school from nineteen seventy-three. So, you know, we're dealing with aging infrastructure, and, you know, as much as I would love to, you know, Jennifer, I mean, I think the bathroom situation is a lot, I think you have to, in my opinion, just listening to the architects and. Uh, because that's the other thing that hasn't been done yet either, the architects have not put together, um, a, you know, a solid plan, we've got, we have some estimates on what a bathroom would cost. Uh, you know, one bathroom was three hundred thousand dollars.
Just to be clear, that's a gang bathroom, right?
Yeah, it's a gang bathroom, but we have several gang bathrooms throughout the, throughout the district. So, so it's, so, so we have the five, we have a five million dollar capital reserve right now, okay? What we, what we wanna do is we would like to get a plan together from Tetra Tech and, and, and then our, uh, our construction management company, Palumbo Group, and we'd like to get that together, we'd like to get that presented. And then, and then present it to the community, so there's buy-in and there's some, and, and, and there's transparency on what we're looking to do here. I think, you know, the one trouble, and I don't, I don't, I know people from the schools are here, but, uh, but the stuff that's being flushed down the toilets, the vape pens and all that stuff is creating a major problem with, with all this. To the point where they have bathroom days, where, where there's backups, I mean, you, you know, I mean, Frank will, you know, will find out soon enough, he was there a couple of years ago. But you have, you have backups all the time, they're constantly getting electric snake or having a company come in to snake. I think the bathroom situation is probably when you really dig into it, it's probably a lot more, it's probably infrastructure, you're probably looking at, you know, tearing up, you know, tearing up floors to replace piping. And, and so that, you know, so we can, so things will move quicker, I know that, uh, talking with some of the students, they say that there are times when you flush the toilet, and you need to flush it, you know, two or three times for things to disappear. So, you know, so there's, I don't think it's as easy as just, you know, new fixtures and, and new toilets, because we wouldn't have done that. So it, this is gonna be a much bigger, bigger, you know, project, so, you know. Good, no, but, but I, but I think what, I think what would make us feel better would be to plan, budget, direct, present to the community exactly what our needs are. This community, you've heard me say this before, the, the, the community has always responded when we've had, uh, when, when we've gone out, like even with the fifty-four million dollar bond with all the school improvements. Um, you know, everybody's just gotta bear in mind that our schools are very old, and we have aging, you know, infrastructure that's gonna. Um, you know, everybody's just gotta bear in mind that our schools are very old, and we have aging, you know, infrastructure that's gonna need, and anytime you start tearing up walls, tearing out ceilings, and tearing up floors. It's gonna cost a heck of a lot more than you would like to think, you know, having a plumber come over to your home would, would cost. So, so the, the facilities committee, the leadership team, uh, is going to concentrate on just what to do, have a, have a plan for the bathrooms. We will, uh, we'll, we'll, you know, I know Tim has gone through, I know that the gang bathrooms are being categorized, as far as, you know, what they can do, the infrastructure and so on, so. I think what we need to do is just, you know, I think we need to take a deep breath, let the leadership team and facilities, and, and our, and Tetra Tech, they're gonna come up with a plan. And, uh, and then we're gonna present it to the community, we're gonna present the cost, and we'll probably end up going out with, you know, with some type of a plan that everybody can rally around. And I think that's the easiest thing to, and that's in my opinion, I think that's the easiest thing to do, that's full transparency.
Um, Mike, I just wanna tap on, head on to that, I mean, the unfortunate thing is schools are gonna start in less than a month, and if there are bathrooms that people can't use, I feel that we should see what that is, which bathrooms they are. We had Karen come up at the rest meeting and talk about the middle school, what is it at the middle school, which bathroom is it, what can we do quickly to remedy that?
Right.
So that people could use it come the school year, because I think that's great that we have a plan to fix the bathrooms, and I think on that original plan, it showed twenty eight bathrooms at, at three hundred thousand dollars each, but I don't think we have twenty eight gang bathrooms, um, I don't.
Well, you've got faculty, there's faculty there, but there's.
No, no, the gang bathrooms.
You don't know gang bathrooms are tight around, I mean, yeah.
Three hundred thousand, right, that's what I'm just saying, so I don't know if that number was a little bit larger than it really ended up being, I don't know, but that would be part of the assessment. But what I would like to say, I would like to see which bathrooms are really a dire need to open up this year, so the students can feel comfortable with that, that's an important thing.
Well, I, I feel disagree with that, and I think that's where, I'm sorry, I was.
Um, I'll, no, I just wanna bring information from the community, that from what I've heard, the middle school kids are holding, they don't go all day, they will not be able to. I myself went to use the bathroom at the high school, one stall worked, there was tape around two sinks, and the one that worked was dribbling on me. That was an unusable bathroom.
Yeah, and that's un- that's unacceptable, so.
And it's not, kids cannot, it's not healthy to not use the bathroom all day.
Totally agree, so.
So, we need to hit the ones.
Okay.
Well, there's a time to decide, we need to figure out what your actions it is, and try and stop data from being safe for.
Okay, we need to do tomorrow.
This is what I'm gonna do tomorrow, I'm gonna meet Tim Walsh, first, I'm gonna, I'm gonna meet Tim Walsh tomorrow morning, I'm gonna ask him, and me and myself, I'm gonna go to the middle school, I'm gonna walk through every bathroom.
Please, please allow Alyssa's speeches.
Then we're gonna go to the high school, and walk every bathroom, and write down exactly what's what.
Thank you.
Something that our facilities can fix, then we have to fix it, if it's a matter of asking someone else to run in and fix it, then we need to fix it.
But then you guys will be interested. Exactly, exactly. Exactly.
Uh, we have the principal of middle school here, Mr. Casacri, so he knows, he walked through the bathrooms the other day, and they were leaking and nobody was using them, so that's a problem. Now, is it our custodians, is it just the infrastructure, is it just the bathrooms that are, then we need to figure that out, so tomorrow morning, send out a message. As soon as he comes in, hopefully he's here, we will walk through every bathroom at the middle school and high school, we'll write down exactly what we need. I went into the middle school the other day, one of the stalls was out, which he knows, I go, I'm, I'm not understanding, where's this stall, not the stall, uh, urinal, uh, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, so I don't know if it's a matter of we couldn't get it, which I don't understand.
Well, I, I, I guess, I thought we had a plan, I thought there was a, well, listen, oh yeah, wasn't there a plan in place, or am I misread, misremembering here?
So.
That we were going, that Tetra Tech was actually putting together a bid to do and prioritizing, and we've already prioritized all the bathrooms in the district. And there's, there's a plan in port, a going to be a plan in place, and Tetra Tech was gonna bid on it, is that, is that agree?
So, there's, there was a plan that was presented to facilities committee meeting, at the facilities committee meeting, um, but that, all that work is capital work.
Right.
Uh, it needs to be approved by C D, like a lot of those, uh, bathrooms, they need to be ripped out because they're not ADA compliant, we can't just, like he said, we can't just, uh, replace fixtures.
Right.
Um, so, I think it was a broader conversation on the capital reserve and how, you know, are you gonna use all of it for every bathroom, or are you gonna use some of it for other issues, uh, other private?
Right. So, I guess what I'm trying to say, Frank, I think there was a plan in place, and it was a long-term plan to basically address every, every single bathroom, over the next, let's, I don't know how much. And, and these gang bathrooms are based, they're, 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 they're men's, uh, the, the female and the male on one side, that's why they're so expensive, that's why they're three hundred thousand dollars. So, they'd have to be ripped out if they're not ADA compliant, so, but it would take a long time, so there was a plan i- in place, so, I, I think. I think you gotta fix the ones that are about, my son just graduated from middle school, same thing, okay, he held it in, he came home. So, but the, the greater plan for us as a board is to see over how many, what is it gonna do, what is it gonna cost to take? So, the frustration I have is that ten million dollar capital reserve fund would have been used, that did not pass, would, would have been used for that, okay, right?
We only have five million, but we only have five million that we can use.
But, but that's not enough, let's see, and the ten million was a capital, so now.
That's not enough, based on what Alyssa said, you're doing dirty bathrooms.
But it did not pass, we would have had that ten million dol- it's done, okay, what I suggest, and it's early, it's only August, is that we'd have another reserve on the, on the, in the election in May. Okay, so whether it's five, ten, you don't have, and it's for capital improvements, so you don't have to go out and do a bond, you just do a reserve, and whatever extra money is around, if any. And we haven't talked about all the pressures coming from DC and Albany and all that stuff, which puts pressure on every single school district in the state, but you at least have a capital. And, and that's the frustration I have, that ten million dollar capital reserve, capital reserve, so it could have been used for any capital improvements, right?
Yeah, similar to the five million, I mean, the, what was on in the proposition was to establish it, so not necessarily was it gonna fund it with ten million, but it at least gave us.
Right, it was essentially establishing a, a bank account we can put money in, and I, I, so it, it passed, okay, so now we have to move on.
Yeah.
So, do, set, set together, put together, and, and you guys can figure it out, how much for May of twenty twenty six, and we'll pass it up, and see what, what other money we can put in.
I just have a clarifying question, to make sure I'm understanding correctly, so we're talking about the ADA compliance, um, from our past conversations, the way I understood it is when things are broken, we can repair, but we can't replace. Cause once you start replacing, then you have to do like a full gut to make it ADA compliant, is that accurate, or is that?
Somewhat, I mean, I, I think that, well, so, you know, we've invested in smaller machinery to clean bathrooms, that's, uh, Frank said before, we're trying, we're trying everything we can without getting the capital to improve the bathroom. I know there was, um, the bathrooms in the middle school across from the cafeteria, or right in that hallway, um, the floor was, we had the floor opened up to fix the piping, so, there are things happening. But again, we're limited to what we can do, because a lot of it does require like a full, like, gut job.
Okay. I just wanna say something about, um, the bathing, if we spend all this money and replace pipes and kids are still putting wipes down pipes, is that not a waste of taxpayer dollars? How do we get them to stop bathing in the bathroom when it costs their foot?
That's a bigger conversation.
That's, that's a ten million dollar question.
There was an errand here yesterday, there was an errand here yesterday, I think we should.
Yeah, so, so, we put a vacuum monitor, I put it in the bathroom, like we did a long time ago with a vacuum monitor at the high school, it wasn't baby, it was cigarette, and, and there was so many. Every time he would go in, and we'd go about, so, all just to.
There was an errand here yesterday at the meeting, he was carrying, I don't know if you remember, and she was talking about these little AI things that you could put in the bathroom, it ties into your fire alarm.
Yes. Yeah.
And they're so sensitive that they would pick up like baby smoke if somebody was smoking in the back.
So.
I think so, there's that.
Yeah, so, so if there have schools, so there have schools that have, that have done that, and what happens is that the, the alarms just keep going off all the time, and it's very, it's, it's very disruptive. I think to your point, what you would probably, what you probably see with a, with a redo, in my opinion, only because of managed parts, um, is that the, the, you would, in this gut job, you would be doing a new sanitary line that would be a lot bigger. In order to accommodate, you know, really anything, I mean, it's unbelievable what, you know, what gets flushed down, down the toilets, um, but unfortunately, when you have the, now the high school was from sixty one. So, you know, that's our sixty three too, but that's, uh, you know, that, again, that's, that's, that's a very, it's a very old infrastructure. And with some of the newer technologies now, with settling areas, and, you know, we have the sewage treatment plant and so on, I think there might be opportunities to make that, you know, larger, a lo- a, a, you know, a larger sanitary line. That would be able to, cause I gotta tell you, I mean, there are a lot of people using, using bathrooms now, I can tell you, you know, Lynn and I, we, we laugh, we, we, we laugh all the time about the old days, because, you know, you never really wanted to go to the bathroom. But now, with the advent of just, you know, just hidden Dunkin' Donuts and coffee bar downstairs, it's amazing how many, how, how many, uh, lines of people are waiting to get into the bathroom. Because I think at the high school, they're only allowing two at a time, you know, and going, so you have a lot of, a lot of people waiting to get into the, uh, waiting to get into the bathroom, so. Uh, that's why I'm anxious to see what Tetra Tech comes up with, and what kind of infrastructure we're gonna have to add, uh, but I do definitely wanna, um, I definitely think we should establish another reserve, I think that would be good. But we also have to tell the public what, you know, what, what's going there, just can't be, the, the, again, this, this public has always responded when, when we needed them, so if you're telling this public that we need, you know, some smaller bonds to go out and do bathrooms at the high school, the middle school, bathrooms at the elementary school. I have, I, I have the utmost faith in this, in this community that they'll approve that in a heartbeat, but they wanna see what they're, what they're approving, I just, you know, that, I think that's the most important thing, so. You know, and we'll have to get those renderings and, and really dive into deeper depth, the building, the building condition survey was, you know, was, wasn't, it's an eye, it's not an eye opener so much as the fact that when you have buildings that are this old. You know, anything you do is, is, you know, is millions and millions of dollars, I mean, uh, even the first one we did, to get the fifty four million dollar bond, they, um, building condition survey, uh, came up with more than ninety six thou- ninety six million dollars worth of work to be done at all the schools. And what we did was we prioritized and got it down to, got it down to fifty four, which, which really became more budget neutral, which is what we were all gonna do, knowing that we have to do more, you know, down the road, so. You know, you don't like kicking the can, but that's, you know, kinda what we've, we've done, but, you know, we're, we're trying to do that, but we're also trying to educate the public on what, you know, on what, uh, what we have to do in order to, you know, be compliant ADA, and also, you know, have nice bathrooms. You know, so, so, so kids and, and, you know, like, can use these things, so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Ben, thank you.
So, do you have a pulse on the board on what we're gonna do, so I can make?
Yeah, so, so is everybody, so Alyssa's got, got the option here, is everybody good with Alyssa's option as it's, as it's prepared, right?
Is everyone ready?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is everyone ready, yes, I, I agree, and, yep, and I appreciate the effort that went into this.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Excellent, excellent job, okay. All right. All right, so we have, uh, next one, so that's the tax warrant option, so we have disposition, next steps, um, what I'd like to do right now is, we're, I'd like to move this into a, a further discussion, an executive session. Uh, with regards to this position and, and whatever else I know, we've got some, um, so I'd like to just move that into, want, to further discuss.
Should we just talk about the process without going into any personnel specifics, and just tell the public what the, what the process is going to be like?
So, so there's a, there's a, an option, um, you know, about, about, with regards to the actual role itself, um, there is a couple of ideas about having a director of governance. You know, with regards to some of the other opportunities that might be within this, you know, because there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of scope, you know, a lot, didn't realize how much there was, there was actually, you know, to this, right?
I do, I, I do have a suggestion, but I'd like to talk about it in the executive session if we could, uh, okay, so.
So, we're not appointing, we're not appointing anybody in that.
No, no, but I do have, uh, some, uh, you know, suggestion, so, regarding the position, since, you know, I had it a while ago, and now I'm back into it, and in order to do this job, you need as much help as you can get. In order to do it, so, that's my opinion, but I think we can discuss it in executive session.
Thank you, Frank, okay, um, okay, board committees, uh, Lucy, thank you for this, so, um, so, uh, just, just to, just to agree, um, so we're looking for our subcommittees for, um, for this coming school year, we're looking at finance and audit. Uh, we're looking at policy, human resources, um, we have special education, um, we have, uh, I wanted to get a pulse on, on combining tech, technology and curriculum, um, or if you wanna keep that separate. Um, I just, if you, if you have a, a quick, you know, if you have a quick go around, Tanner, you have any, any, do you think it's good to separate, or can we, you know, can we have them together? If you're asking, I, I, I don't want any focus taken away from curriculum, technology is also important, but I think once you start attaching stuff to the committee on curriculum, we're losing focus again on that. Okay, so, I. It's obviously more meetings, it's more, uh, you know, different agendas, but I think to focus on technology, to focus on curriculum, don't attach it into. Okay, that's not, yeah, everybody have, have a feeling on that, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, good, good, okay, very good, huh, Lucy, good, okay.
Are we gonna have a separate technology, we did not have a separate technology committee last year.
We did, we didn't, but I think the technology with, with, with how this thing's going, and, plus the fact, we love hanging with Ben, we know that, and that's, you know.
Would that be better paired with, uh, facilities, I think, is that, does that go more in hand in hands or not?
I mean, that's, that's, that's certainly something, you know, that, I mean, I think technology, I guess, Chris, because, I mean, I, I don't, I, I certainly can see that, I mean, um.
Could you read the list again?
Yeah, sure, so it's, it's, so it's, uh, finance and audit, policy, human resources, special education, curriculum, technology, transportation, and facilities.
So, Mike, would you consider maybe, just because special ed, um, and H R, and even curriculum, maybe doing those full board, just because special ed has so many different moving parts. I think that's, um, in my opinion, a better way to go about that, in addition to H R, because we have a committee, and then everything has to be re-explained to the full board, in addition to, um, curriculum. I think that's, uh, an area that everyone likes to hear firsthand, uh, what's going on, just because we have the three elementary schools, um, and there's always a discussion of who's being taught at what time. S I O, so the board hears them all the time, and then maybe just keep finance and audit, policy, transportation, uh, building facilities, and, uh, technology, so that, uh, the board hears it together.
So, you're, so you're saying, so you're suggesting, cause I, I, so curriculum and.
Special ed, H R, be full board.
Special ed and curriculum, you want that full board because of the.
C D. Go ahead.
Right.
H R, special ed, and curriculum be full board, so that when we meet with the assistant suits in those fields, it's a full board discussion. And since our, um, meetings have full community ability to come and speak, everyone hears it at the same time, so it's not so, um, specific.
Can we? All right, so, go ahead, Ben, no, no, I'm sorry.
The baseline for last year was this, so what we had was finance, audit, policy, facilities, ad hoc advocacy, okay, Mr. Tanner? Then we had special ed and curriculum, we also had, in each meeting, we had a presentation from Dr. Matt here, okay, for curriculum. We had a special ed presentation from the director, and we had a presentation from technology, so, I, I guess I'm a little confused, because you're throwing in transportation now, so the baseline last year.
I'm not throwing it out, I said there should be a transportation committee.
So, I, okay, so this is the first one here, so why should, you think we should have a transportation committee?
We had transportation in the past, it's good to know what's going on with our students and how they're being transported, if there's any nuances, we used to have transportation, that was to be a committee.
Right.
Now, that maybe that was a decision of last year, every year.
No, it was a decision from a couple of years ago, we haven't had transportation in a long time.
Well. Yes, we, we used to have it, so maybe it was before you wanted to board, you start transportation, but that's a decision, but that's a decision to be insane, I'll call it, that's what we're talking about.
Well, so, where we.
Well, that's why we're, that's why, that's why we're here, that's why we're here, Ben, Lisa, help.
Can I just say something, the situation where we are with special ed, I really, really think that it needs to have its own committee and focus, because it, it can't, it needs more. It needs more time and dedication, I think we need some parents on the committee, I think we need some with, um, uh, staff members, sorry, it's a day. And the board members, I think that's something that, and really hone in on focus, and focus, I think it wouldn't, we wouldn't have enough time to sit here and get what needs to be done, done within a board meeting.
So, how about, so, obviously.
So, I would, I would agree with that as well, I would like to see, like, committee members on that, um, community members on that as well, I mean, I don't know if it needs to be full board, but, you know.
Yeah.
Well, community members, if you're doing the committees, they can come to meetings and, um, ask and participate, and.
I was, like, hoping for a little more buy-in with, with, with the.
So, so.
But it's like we have somewhere at.
You also have septum.
Hold on, you.
I, I know we have septum, I, I really think it needs a board.
Right, no, and, and that's true, septum, so I'm gonna, so here's what. So I'm gonna, so here's what I'm gonna do, since, since we have so many new faces in special ed. What I'm gonna ask Superintendent Neill to do is, because he's meeting with Corinne and he's meeting with, with, with the, with the special ed leadership and, and the teachers and so on. Let's ask them, let's ask them what, what, let's ask them, obviously, we have a very, very vested, you know, community. It's a big part of our community and the successes we've all talked about tonight is extremely, extremely, I, I mean, this has to, this has to really go well. It's very, very important. So, but let's do this. Let's have Superintendent Neill, let's have him meet with the, meet with the new, the new leadership. I think, express what we're looking, what we're looking for and just see what they're, you know, how they would like to, you know, because I know they wanna include us. Let's see how they, 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 they see, or they, how they, how they would like us to be, you know, involved in this.
Mike, I'm sorry, can we also see with how the community members would like? As far as it goes, the special ed, as you're talking about the administrators, but also here in the community?
So, well, we have, well, again, I mean, Frank's gonna meet with, Frank's meeting with Septo as well. And I don't wanna, I certainly don't wanna minimize their importance. They've been a, they've been a big, a big stakeholder.
They're gonna be big stakeholders.
They're on the committee, yeah, some of the members there.
That would be great, that would be great.
I actually have that written here, if possible, maybe one of the.
It's easier for community members, yeah.
I actually have in my notes when I was making it tonight. So when you talk about the committee, how many, how many people you think is enough? But you don't wanna have too many.
Typically, three board members, you have your chairman, assistant commissioner.
Like a total.
Oh, for committee, yeah.
Whatever.
Twenty?
That'd be fantastic.
Max.
Max.
Max, because when they're putting community members.
To community, and we get those community members.
That's not a board committee, that's not a board committee. Board committee is to put three board members and without policy, the community can come and participate. So to really appoint people to that committee, not a board committee.
What about an act?
So I agree.
That's something, it's a real board committee, it's gonna be an hack hack.
Yeah, I think that's why, I think it's important for, for Frank to, to, to meet with the new leadership and just see what they're, but, but let's see how, you know, look, listen, we want this to be successful. We want, you know, and, but we also, we also wanna harness all the energy because I think everybody's so passionate about it.
She's gonna be there for Septo also.
So, so, so let's, so I would, I would ask you to, let's, let's have Frank meet with that group, understand that we have a lot of energy and then just see what they're, you know, because, like you said, at special ed, we can, if people come to, you know, people are, the meetings are open, there is, there is, you know, there is communication back and forth. And I just think, I'm, I'm more excited about special ed than I've ever been this year with the, with the new, with the new folks coming in. So I think that, I think I'd like to just see what their, what their palette is and then see how, how we can assist that as a community. So would that be fair?
It would be. I just think that if, if, I don't, I think we would be doing a disservice if we didn't have the support.
Totally, totally agree, totally agree.
And you can also do it, so with the special ed last year, we had it, it was added on late in the year.
It was, because on special ed, we're in a.
Right, but it was only every two months and they only met, I think, special ed met once. So it was.
The special ed met three times.
Oh, okay, so maybe curriculum only met once.
And, and actually, one meeting, we had two parents from Septo, one was from Septo, two were from Septo. And as we went around, it developed into, um.
So is that a matter of just communicating? You want people to come to those meetings?
Well, they have participants as well.
They're all, they're all, they're all posted and taken and all that.
Yeah, they're, they're, no, okay.
So what I, my suggestion would be, instead of doing it every two months, you have special ed every month, like finance and like, I don't know, policies, policies, yeah, every month. Policies every two months, facilities is every month, right?
Yes.
Ad, ad hoc is ad hoc. And then curriculum, my suggestion would be, well, I, I wanna be on the curriculum committee. I'd love to chair it with Dr. Lawrence, but that, I would say, well, maybe every two months is fine. But that'd be my recommendation.
No, no, that's, that's fine, so what, so.
And I don't think we need transportation and I think technology should be done with the entire board as, where he's still here for.
Well, he comes through.
He was, we have Dr. August, have, Dr. August present, yeah, and have an update. And maybe if we want to, what happens is those updates are really good, but we, we minimize it for five, 10 minutes and maybe we'll.
Okay, so, so.
So let's go on to that.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 so, 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 so transportation? Transportation, just, we need, we need transportation, okay. All right, so finance and audit, policy, human resources, special education, curriculum, facilities.
You don't wanna do any full board, you want to do all through committees?
Well, the three we have to have, right, are policy, finance and facilities.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, three we're onto, yeah.
Yeah, so those and the other two, so, I mean, li- listen, I mean.
But technology will do a full board maybe, what does everybody think about that?
I have no problem, I, I think that's a good idea.
Full board of the technology?
Yeah.
I think we get that though, whatever session Ben comes and presents, he does a presentation.
Because it's a full board.
Yeah.
Then the same thing, we do that with HR.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, so.
So curriculum will be, so curriculum, Dr. Lawrence, will be a little bit more robust, possibly?
So six, seven.
Do we have a committee? Are we having a committee?
Yes.
Oh, you're, full board for HR again or no?
HR, do you want to leave that as full board or have it be a separate?
I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with Lucy's idea about full board with HR.
Just because we have to come back in here and.
If that's what happens, they're coming back and they're having to ask.
So do not.
Yeah, so, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, so then we'll do technology and HR full board and then special ed, curriculum, facilities, policy and finance and audit would be individual, oh, I'm sorry, ad hoc.
Would you just review that again?
Ad hoc, finance and audit, yeah.
Lisa's typing away over here, you should see.
Facilities, special ed and curriculum.
Yeah, we're doing that, we're doing advocacy.
By the hack hack.
I, I don't see, why, did you?
But, but we have to have a, a mission, like, is there a specific area that we're gonna be?
Electric buses.
Yeah, buses.
Electric buses.
Obviously, you have a lot, you have, there'll be a lot, so.
Okay.
No, I, I, listen, I think we should, I think it's been a good one, I, I, you know, I think ad hoc would be, would be fine.
I don't know if last year, everybody just brought their ideas and we figured out which topics we were gonna run with.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is, that's a great way to get, if we're here, no, we didn't have to bring an actual.
Well, listen, the nicer part of having work sessions with the fine people over here is that we do have an opportunity to, you know, to hear from them and see them, you know, in person. Now, like I tell you, I, I, you know, many years on school board, you know, you go to, go to the public and, you know, we're there in the auditorium of the high school, nobody there. You know, it's just, there's nobody in them, which is actually probably, you'd say, a good thing, but, but this is nice. This is, the conversations here have been robust. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts going on and it's just wonderful to be part of it. Okay, so I think we're good with that. Anything else? Ad hoc, ad hoc will focus on? I mean, it's, I, it's, I mean, obviously, what it's been, it's been a, it's been a lightning rod for, for the new legislation that's been trying to, you know, between electric buses and between, you know, these unfunded mandates, I think that this is an important, still an important step to, you know.
Yeah, that's one of my comments here, Tim.
Oh, I can imagine, yeah, this is.
When do you want to, what's the timeline? September, when's it gonna start?
So, so what I want to do is I wanna, I agree to this, then everybody jump on your emails. I'm gonna send this out. Everybody send me your interest and then Lucy and I are gonna sit down. We're gonna, we're gonna bang everything out and, and we'll, and then we'll get the biggest things. I just, again, with the assistant superintendents, I have to be respectful there as well. So, so I think Frank, we'll, we'll review the, the amount of times, I think, that, that we meet. I think there's probably some committees that might not have to meet as often. I think there might be more, obviously, maybe, maybe, might be earlier and then maybe in the middle of the year where things are up and running, you can kinda, you know, because we have to be respectful of, of everybody's, you know, everybody's time as well and, and we certainly try to be. Okay, so I'll send, I'll send that out. Everybody sends in their, what they're looking for. I know everybody's gonna sign up for everything, so we'll, you know, we'll, we'll put names in the app and start drawing and that'll be just fine, but that, I'm just, so, so, okay. Thank you for that, so we're good. Lucy, you got all that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thanks again. I'm sorry, I'm just, she's, she's, just, she's, okay. Okay, Board of Education Retreat, heard back from, from Neil Boyle. The Board of Education Retreat will be, as far as everybody's, and please check your calendars one more time. It'll be September 17th and it'll be over.
Yeah, we talked about the 10th.
I thought about the 10th.
Okay.
That's on the second.
All right, if they, they're available.
They're available on the, they're available on the 17th or the 18th.
Oh, the, yeah.
Yeah, so, I know, I just, check your, check your calendars. Yeah, we can, that's not a problem.
Do you have a time?
We're actually after five.
It's after five.
So 5:30?
We don't have the exact time, we just say after five.
So 5:15?
They rotate.
I like, I like the 5:15.
They rotate.
See what Neil says.
I want to determine the location, also want to determine the date. We're gonna confirm that here. I don't know.
So what's the date, Mike, from Saturday?
If we want to set this, that works for everyone, to go back to Bosse's, see if that, so it works and then we take it from there and then we share.
And if that doesn't, if it doesn't work, we'll, you know, we'll look, we'll follow, we wanna, we wanna get this, get this going sooner. Guys, please.
Let's see what Neil says.
Yeah.
Absolutely, okay. Very good.
So Neil is due both days?
He is, okay. He is, after five.
Five, so I don't think I'm gonna pay for the day off.
5:15, I got you, okay. All right, so we have.
Oh, superintendent search.
Pardon? Oh, superintendent search, yes, okay. So I have, and compliments of, of Bosse's, I have a document that I will, that I will share. And it's just, it's just a draft, so I didn't wanna, I wanna post it, so this is the, this is the, it's a superintendent search timeline. It's a, it's one that Bosse's does. We have a poster with Bosse's on several things, so, so the search can, you know, can be conducted right, right, from Bosse's and, and paid through via Coser. So we have, this'll be available, if anybody wants to see, like, it's just a draft. So it looks, so it looks like, so again, you know, August, September, there's a board presentations from, from Bosse's. In October, there'd be a search criteria developed. In November, they would be gathering input from student, staff and the community. In November, December, there would be initial screening. And this, again, this is all, this is all just a, just a draft. Interviewing by, you know, by consultants, credential verification. December 31st, applications would close. January, they would meet, the Bosse's would meet with the board to review the slate and select semifinalists. February, semifinalists would be interviewed by the, by the board. Finalists would be established at the end of February. In March, there'd be background checks and things that would go along with, with the candidate. In April, we would do a site visit and in May, there would be contract, negotiation finalized and the new person, the new superintendent would be appointed effective July 1, 2026. I will, if you wanna take a look at this, that's fine.
I would like to take a look.
Thank you.
Is this a typical timeline to take a full school year to research for a superintendent?
Yes.
That's not true, that's not true.
Well, if you're following a template where you, you.
Wait, Anthony left, he left in February of whatever year it was, okay? Then he decided he stayed around to the end of the year. We started it in February.
Well, I, I, that's actually not.
All right, that's true.
This is exactly, this is exactly what we, what we did. This is the template.
Okay.
Yeah, this is exactly what we did. Again, you know, you can digest it here, pass that, would you pass that down to, to us guys? So it's a draft, we, you know, we can take it, but this is the draft that Bosse's, that Bosse's does. Okay? Any other, any other discussion? That was the timeline? Any other discussion for that? I mean, take a look at it, digest it again, it's only a draft.
I would like for us to, this might be the, the draft, the line for it, for us to work to move this faster. This is a priority for our district superintendent.
Well, that's, well, that's the, that's the, that's the way.
That's the schedule, basically, you've got a higher superintendent for July 1, 2026.
Why are we aiming for July 1st?
If you go with July 1st, this is the schedule.
So if you go with earlier.
Try with a different schedule, then we could ask them. That's something for us to discuss tonight. We just brought forward to discuss, that's all. So this is a proposal with July 1st, that's all. Do you wanna have a different date? We could ask for a different date.
Lucy, I guess, and Mike, why, we said this before today.
We just got it today.
Okay.
We just got it from Bosse's and we're going here.
It's a reasonable question, it's a reasonable question.
But it's on the agenda for tonight for discussion. You're making it sound like we're hiding anything. It's being, we're on the agenda tonight.
I'm asking a question.
And I'm answering you.
Okay, if it was today, fine, okay.
Okay. Okay, Lucy, so we're.
Can I take a picture of her?
Can we have a discussion about the date if we're aiming for July 1?
I'll take a picture of this.
Yeah.
Can I keep a copy?
Yes, it's a draft, I'll, I'll, I'll send.
We could send it to you.
Well, just send it to us, okay?
We could send it to you.
Fine, send it to you.
You can look at the date when they create it, August 1.
I believe you.
Okay, so.
Oh, it was a couple of days ago.
All right, okay, thank you for that. Okay, um, okay, so can I get a, can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Are we gonna have a discussion about the date of what we're working for with the superintendent search? Because then you said you gave them a date of July 1 and, and we're, we keep having to have a discussion?
That's what we're gonna talk about.
Well, we could, we, we can talk about, we can talk about that, 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 that stuff in the executive session since we're, since it involves personnel, so.
We're not speaking about any technical questions, we're talking about the process.
So what happens is with the schedule, Bosse's comes and does a presentation. So at that time, we could ask them for a schedule with, with half a year until they get more to us.
Right now, the first presentation is when?
We have to ask them to come in and give a board presentation, so we have to let them know a board meeting date in order to invite them to give the date.
We could actually have them come in, let's say, even in September if we wanted to, right?
Well, they, they, it says it right here, August, September. If you look at the sheet, it says August or September that they come and do a presentation to the board. Says date to be determined. So at that time, that's when that discussion can occur, saying, what do you feel? Do you think that we could have a candidate here for January 1 or whatever it may be? We could have that discussion. That's why this is a draft, that they come in and do a board presentation. That allows that robust discussion and it's listed here, August or September.
Okay, great, terrific.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we get a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda? Trustee Harrigan, can I get a second?
Second.
Vice President Masafra, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so right now, we are going in, right now, I am. Okay, um, okay, do, huh? Yeah, public comments, I, I'm sorry, it wasn't on. Okay, um, public comments, who, do you, do you have anybody signed up?
Yes, we have Erin O'Brien.
Okay, Erin, I see Erin, hi Erin.
Hi there. Hello, the one.
Hi Erin.
I don't wanna keep you long, I know it's, it's been a long meeting. One thing that really stands out at this meeting is the lack of trust amongst the board members.[1681.58] And I would like to say that our newly elected school board campaigned on fiscal accountability and transparency, many members of the community came out to vote, and were excited for that. But instead, they delivered a million dollar betrayal of both of these proposals, principles, uh, only weeks into their tenure, before having had any chance to know Tona as a leader, they forced her out. This reckless decision burdens us, the taxpayers, with over $500,000 in immediate costs, as well as $1,200 per day for the interim superintendent, as well as costs in fees, time, energy, and most of all, the distraction of a new search, when we had momentum, why, why? Do we like to look backwards? A lot of them, let's go back to the good old days, I didn't pee back in the day, I didn't need a bathroom, are we going backwards or are we going forward? To fix a problem, the board itself created through its own dysfunctional government and governance is gonna cost us a million dollars, as well as a lack of trust in the community, amongst you, amongst the teachers, parents, do you know how many texts, I was on vacation when the last meeting happened, my phone lit up like a Christmas tree, I gotta move out of this neighborhood, because I have a special needs child, I moved here for the great special ed program, these people hate each other and can't be civil, the, the president brought in an old buddy and an old buddy of his wife. This is the narrative, it's the worst-kept secret in Mayapac, even more troubling is the seeming closed-door cronyism in selecting Tona's replacement. Rather than promoting a qualified Mayapac educator or administrator such as an assistant superintendent, a former principal, with a transparent and merit-based process, the board appears to have rushed to the appointment of a personal friend, this raises serious ethical and legal questions, and exposes our district and investigation, and exposes our district to investigations and lawsuits, so I think we're gonna need that, that money. Mr. Mealy, I don't know you personally, you're nothing but a legend in our town, I have nothing but support for you and your new role, I believe you to be an honest citizen, an honest citizen who, to use a baseball metaphor, calls balls and strikes, and I wish you every success in the coming months or year, however long it takes to find your replacement. My inject, my objections are not about you personally in any way, shape, or form, it's about the process of closed-door cronyism, and the impact that this is having on our community. I've been in this community over 20 years, I'm very proud to have two children that have finished high school, are in university now, and one who's a rising junior, and I'm here because I care. And if you talk to any teachers, or principals, or folks who know me, I'm not a complainer, I'm someone who cares deeply about education, my whole life has been spent in education. Mr. Monlan, before you thank me for my input, I ask you to share an honest commitment with this, with the people in the room here today, and the people listening in, that you will do a merit-based search for superintendent, a merit-based search, uh, for a qualified superintendent that is looking forward, that knows the tsunami that is about to hit all of us and our children, as AI changes everything, you think the internet changed the world? It's quaint compared to what AI is going to do, and we need a forward-thinking unified board, not whatever this is, thank you.
Beth Paracomi. Beth? Okay, that's all that's signed up tonight, does anyone else wanna address the board?
Yeah, we signed up late.
Oh. Come on up.
Tara?
Yes, great. Good evening, I would like to compliment you, I think you're extremely qualified, extremely intelligent, and we're lucky to have you. My name is Tara Conlin, formerly Gachus, my family has been a part of this district since 1969, my husband's family has been a part of this district since 1968. I've also been a teacher in a neighboring district since 1996, so as the kids would say, I have been invested in Mayapac and education since the mid to late 1900s. In this time, I have seen the good and the bad of the district, I have been personally affected by the good and the bad of this district. I have never felt the need to address the board until now, what I have been seeing, hearing, and reading is confusing, disheartening, illogical, and to be frank, seems wrong and shady. For example, this meeting clearly shows the dysfunction that now exists. I commend you all for volunteering your time to take on this role, but with this role comes responsibility to all stakeholders, all students, all staff, and all parents, not just a select few, to make objective, not subjective decisions. I urge the board moving forward to put aside political agendas and personal vendettas, to work together in order to make educationally and fiscally sound, objective decisions, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Christine Puccini? Puccino?
So, I spoke at the last meeting, I speak at every meeting, um, so I'm not gonna touch upon my feelings about recent voting and the formation of the board, um, the video speaks for itself. I'm gonna focus on what I always focus on, I've been speaking about creating an ad hoc subcommittee for special education for probably three years, you can look at the last meeting of every year for the past three years, and I've been asking for more transparency and more parent involvement, direct parent involvement, the top reason is because we have an uncontrollable turnover of the special administration, if we have an ad hoc committee, we have documented knowledge that can be transferred over to whoever decides to stay or leave of the projects that we're working on, I had a meeting with Mr. Cole before we left, along with the new secondary supervisor, I appreciate the speed in which she was hired, and they were willing to listen, but things can go up in smoke, things can end up in the fire, we work and work and work for years to get to a point where we're ready for progress, where is the special education audit? Our tax money and our grant money that our disabled children gained from Medicaid paid for a special education audit, we were told for two years, we have to gather data, we have to have transparency and a broad stroke to actually collect the data to find out what's wrong with the special education department, what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, where we need to put money. It is missing, it is done since February, we were, we participated in it, we gave our heart into it, staff, faculty, teachers, administration, parents, we have no data. Did that go up in smoke? Because now we don't have an administrator that started it, we start all these projects, and our kids are aging out, I've been talking about something since my son is in sixth grade, I don't wanna keep, do, he's in ninth grade now, I don't wanna keep doing this, I have twins that are in special ed in third grade, I don't wanna have to fix a high school program when they get there. We're adding more and more special education classes, this is not going away, we need to take the data, we need to review it, and I don't want a redacted summary, we need the full report public. Otherwise, parents are already reaching out, we need to submit a FOIL, we're not giving the, the information that we need, we're not taking action, we just keep talking in circles about, oh, it needs work, oh, we, let's, I refuse the idea of asking the new administration what they wanna do, we already have parents that know what they wanna do. We wanna be part of a committee that makes change, that is why I emailed the entire board last week, a full outline, and I can read today if you want to, of why we need a special education ad hoc committee, we need to meet, just like how the ad hoc advocacy committee met, and actually make things change. Mr. Harrigan started it, we actually gained local control, we made a difference, so we need to start making a difference, not, we need to spend three years identifying a need, okay, and then something happens. So, this is the letter I wrote, if we need to know why, dear trustees of the Mayapac Board of Education, I am writing to respectfully request the formation of an ad hoc special education committee comprised of parents, staff, and board members, the purpose of this committee would be to have all voices heard collectively, address both the urgent and long-term needs of the district's special education program, and to collaborate on solutions that benefit students, families, and staff. Ideally, this committee would work to focus on comprehensive evaluation, assessing the current structure, practices, curriculum, and resources for the special ed department, identify strengths, which we have many, gaps, and opportunities for growth, including the review of the 2425 special education audit, completed by an outside company that we paid for. Multiple learning pathways, designing a continuum of differentiated, individualized education opportunities that support needs of all abilities, inclusive opportunities, expanding and sustaining, the main part, sustaining, adaptive, inclusive, extracurricular, social, and athletic programs to ensure every student has equitable access to school and community life. Explore implementing district-wide training on neurodiversity-affirming practices, Mr. Cole promised and said that NYU is gonna be hired to bring in a training program district-wide, and start with individuals that work in this district, one-on-one with the students, poof, again, our plans are gone, where is that? Was it paid for by a grant, is it in process, and the new superintendent is gonna, the director is going to implement it, there are so many things going on that get in the dustbin. I am done with this, that's why we need an ad hoc committee, because then we have documents, and videos, and parents making change. Vocational development, increasing vocational training, internships, and career readiness opportunities for high school students, both strong pathways to employment and post-secondary success. Look at our mission statement, we promise that we are preparing these students for the real world, my son is in ninth grade, he cannot read, he cannot read. Most of his classmates cannot read, you wanna talk about bathrooms, we have two self-contained classrooms in the high school that use one bathroom in one classroom, and it's decrepit, and it is not ADA compliant, because they have, they cannot use the public bathrooms because of sensory issues, and then students in wheelchairs have to go to the nurse's office. Is that fair for the nurse to have to deal with excess students coming in when they're trying to manage diabetics and tube feeds? It is complete and complete disarray, you need an ad hoc committee to have parents come in, and yes, I know that parents can come in at the end of meetings, all the committee meetings, and say what they wanna say, they come and say what they wanna say, nothing happens, they don't wanna come anymore, they need to be an accepted member, there needs to be an email chain, this needs to happen. And if it's not prioritized immediately, that's really saying something about this board, because I suggested it in 2022, gave it time, we had a new administrator, new superintendent, gave it time, suggested it again, so if you wanna know why, it's because we have all these conversations happening in isolation. If you don't create this committee and include parents who have good ideas, and make them feel like they're part of the conversation, and administration leaves, we're starting over from scratch to getting to fail these students.
Can I just say something?
I did, wait, one second.
So, I, can I just say something?
I need one. Sorry, thank you for coming forward, um, special ed is very near and dear to me, um, I was one of the founding members of Septo, uh, the district didn't have anything like that at that time, and our special ed department unfortunately fell apart, it got put together, and now unfortunately fell apart again, now that report you just mentioned, the new superintendent did talk about that at the six o'clock hour, that he just received it, am I correct, he just received it, he's up to page six or eight, I think he said.
There's 90 pages.
Right, it's quite a, it's quite robust, he said, so he plans on meeting with administrators, now, based on what you're saying, maybe we should think of doing the ad hoc special ed, and doing special ed not as a separate committee, but do that full board, so the ad hoc takes over like the main committee per se.
I think for this year, and the way ad hoc works, is you have an ad hoc committee created when you have a need, it is an emergent need, you don't have to keep continuing it every year.
Are, are, are you understanding what I'm saying, I agree.
So, when you say ad hoc, so the advocacy, okay, committee that Tanner, I, I don't, I, I, Mike asked me and Tanner to do this, through the first year, so, the advocacy is to advocate for our district-wide stuff to the government.
Yes.
So, if that's what you're talking about, that's, I, that's, that's fine, but advocacy to have change inside the district, that's not really what, like, an ad hoc advocacy meeting is about, if you're talking about some changing what's happening here, Mike, I, I don't wanna delay you, you know, you know I have an IEP son, okay? I, I was the president of Septo, so I, I hear you, I, what I would suggest, you already met with the new director?
Yes.
Okay, so, she starts officially on September, I would suggest that do it, Frank is actually gonna do it, is for her, have her create, if you wanted, I know that Dr. Cole used to have meetings, and he kinda messed one up at one point, I remember, have a monthly, bi-monthly, you have as many meetings to create what you're talking about, I don't think, and you, then board members can come. I think there's a way to do what you wanna do, just, I'm just, what I'm saying is the advocacy piece is for, to advocate, hey, you know what, Albany is putting together things against special ed, and we're fighting that.
You can create an ad hoc committee.
I was just gonna say that has to do with any specific topic of, so we created an ad hoc committee that focuses on advocacy.
Yes, absolutely.
Hold on, hold on, people, hold on, people, so, so just to your point, and I think it's excellent, and I, and I, I appreciate the passion, Frank got the report, Frank's meeting with the, with the new folks.
Yeah.
I think that, I, I, I think that the passion, uh, listen, we know it's broken, and we know it needs to be fixed, um, and that's why, uh, I, I, I would like, Frank is meeting with the, with the new, uh, with the new group, and, and he can, he can take it on there, I agree with you, but it needs to be more, much more parent involvement, and there has to be, you know, there has to be a, a, you know, an, an avenue to get this thing going in the right direction, and I'd like to think that, that, that Frank is able to, you know, to do this, and pull the new people that are coming in together, and then, and then let's figure out how we can harness, I said it earlier, how we harness the passion, you know, for, for, for special ed, and get this ruling instead of just lip service.
You know, I, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind having you call my office, and come on in one-on-one.
I speak for many parents, and the fact is that when we attend meetings, it's after the fact, things have been decided already.
Right.
And we are in the district until our kids are 18, and many of us 22.
I'd like to say that we do have this report, it does have some things, and I think we should have, I, I don't know, is there something that says we can't have parents on a subcommittee?
You can't, you can't do that, but, and I wish Tanner was here, but it, it has to be a specific type of construct, and it is a specific.
You have to be an ad hoc. It's an ad hoc.
Which has nothing to do with advocacy unless you make it about that.
Okay, I mean, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a topic, it's a, you can have it as a.
So, ad hoc, well, it's a difficult.
Ad hoc just means temporary.
All right, I, 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 I think that's fine, it just has to be Matt, I would, I'm gonna defer to what you just said, Frank's, Frank is meeting with the special ed lady, or excuse me, and I think that'll be the kickoff, that'll.
I think so, and I think Frank will be able to take, you know, he's gonna, he's looking at the report, you know, he's gonna let leadership team, I think, I, listen, special ed's on the radar screen big time.
Right, and I think that's something like what Christine is describing, um, I think we do need to have, where we have at least two parents, and one of them, like you said, we were talking possibly from Septo, and we either meet before or something like that, and it can't, you know, not just any parent, but I feel like a parent, geez, now I'm a parent, especially if I did too. But I feel like the parents, they, they, they talk to each other, they know what they, what's needed, and this review that has come out.
Yeah.
That has finally been found.
Yeah.
That's gonna have some things that we need to do, and getting some parent input is helpful, and I also would like to know.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, 100%.
I've been asking for this review forever, and I know we have it now, I'm not sure why we have to wait for administration and everyone to read it over, as a board member, I think as trustees, we should be able to have it now.
I agree.
Can I see, again?
Sure.
Can I request that you vote upon having a, like, I don't understand why this has to be an extended inquiry with new administration, can you vote on it? When you decide what committees you're having, can you vote on having an ad hoc committee or not?
So, so the only thing that I'm asking, okay?
Because I think it's independent of administration, administration can come and go, administration doesn't have tenure, they don't have contract, they can leave at any time, we can fire them at any time, the parents are the ones that stay. The board members have three years guaranteed, that's what we need to get, is the year of the board members and to make change.
So, the only thing, so, so, and, good thanks, the, the only thing I'm asking is, I, I think, I think what I want, what I would like to think that Frank wants to do, Frank's gonna sit down with some of the new, some of the new people that were, that we have come in, you're in, it's coming in, you're having a meeting over there, let's find out, listen, they know that we wanna have an ad hoc, they know we want the advocacy, let's find out what, what kind of framework they're, they're looking for, and maybe they can add something to this, maybe they're, maybe they've done something like this, you know, before, or they, or they have some ideas on how, on, on how this would work.
So, if they come back and state that we don't need an ad hoc committee, because they're gonna do something else that they wanna do, then you're gonna leave it to their discretion, and still, that's all.
No, 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 that, that.
That's what Mr. Cole did, Mr. Cole said, we're not gonna do a committee like that, we're gonna talk about change.
He's not here. He's not.
Well, that's why we're, and that's why we're here, all of us, so, you're gonna.
So, I think we're all agreeing with you on an ad hoc.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, okay, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, we know the fundamentals, right?
I agree. Absolutely.
So, we think, we think.
But you know how, but you know also how frustrating this is for parents, that I need to like be cottonmouth pleading with you to do this? It, I don't even think that that was a hard decision to make, it's, it's really telling, it's really telling.
So, can I just stop you there for a second, so what happened is since our committees, community members could come in, that's what the premise was, because before, community members didn't have the input at the committee level, so that's why we're saying you have this special ed committee, invite Septo to come there, and any family member, parent can come to the committee.
We have eight to 10 people show up for Septo meetings, what's the, what's the numbers that you're getting at the committee meetings for parent involvement? Because when I came to special education, I was the only one.
Yeah, you, you came, one time it was just you, and one time it was you and Wanda, I think I gave us.
So, giving the ability for parents to speak, they already feel like it doesn't make a difference, they need to have like, parents are either like, I'm gonna create a coalition in the community, and call the newspaper, or I have to run for the board, we should have a middle, we should not have to have to do this.
You should run for the board, I don't.
I don't have the time to run for the board, many parents, special education parents don't have time to run for the board, they're worried about their kids learning how to tie their shoes before they leave school. Like, this is the, this is the harsh reality of it, I'm sorry if that's ugly.
It's, and, no, it's.
But that's the real struggle, you should know what parents are dealing with in the community and at home.
Okay, but you have to understand, you have to understand that this is, this is the board's, this is the, the board's priority, the number one priority is special ed, we know that it's gonna, it's been a challenge.
So, why do you find they make an ad hoc committee?
We're, we're not, we're not at all.
They just said they're willing to. They just agreed.
They wanna make an ad hoc committee.
No, they said they're gonna leave it up to the new administration. They just agreed.
No, 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 no.
And then I said, why can't we do it?
They all talked.
It's not that we can't do it, I just want, I want, I want Frank to be able to digest and talk to the, talk.
I'm not saying I'm demanding answers to every problem we have in special education right now, we have to look at the audit, you have to get to know staff, you have to, and also, the audit is over a year old. So, a lot of the data might have either been fixed. So a lot of the data might have either been fixed or superseded.
I've been asking for months.
Lisa has been asking for it.
And I'm sorry if this falls on new members' shoulders, but everything is falling on new members' shoulders. All the seat stuff is falling on new administration, new administration, new administration. But you know it doesn't change the parents. I'm not going anywhere.
Absolutely.
Our kids aren't going anywhere. So if you do not include parents on the continuum, nothing's ever gonna change. You guys can decide to leave or not run after two years. That's how you keep continuity.
Well, we just had a discussion and we're gonna talk about adding the special ed ad hoc, because I think it is important. And as committee, all our committees now are all open to community members, anyone else that can come in and sit and ask questions. And I think that's the most important thing is community involvement. And, and we're gonna add that ad hoc to special ed.
Can you just?
I think that's a consensus. What Mike is just trying to say is he just wants to have the discussion with the new person that's gonna be starting, just so that they're aware and how they see who should be part of that ad hoc. Like, how many community members? Who do you invite? How do you invite them? How do you pit? So it's just those nuances, and I really appreciate you coming forward.
But we have the framework for the advocacy which worked. You had to apply. There was not a limit. And then you decided based upon who joined, what the topic of need is. It's not like we're reinventing the wheel. That worked.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't disagree with you at all.
Yes, sure.
Can I speak? Can you come up to the front for a second?
Chris, Christine, Chris.
Can you come up to the front for a second, please?
I need data.
Listen, you don't know me, but it's okay. I hear everything that you're saying, okay? And I really, you know, I only been here a week, but Dr. Lawrence knows, we're, we're really kind of.
And I don't mean to be insane, but it has been an enormous fight this year, and the turnover is getting super frustrated. And I'm glad that you're here and listening.
Okay, you want me to finish? Can I finish? Okay, I hear your concerns. I hear how you feel. Listen, being a mother or a parent of a special ed student is not for one day. It's for life, but you know. I'm, I'm, listen, I'm empathetic to that. That's why it's one of my main priorities right now, as long as I'm stay, as long as I'm here. We're meeting tomorrow. I'll tell you what, you can call my office. You were probably worked during the day. You can bring four or five, whoever, I don't care, ten. We can, you can call my office. We can meet here on a five o'clock, five-thirty. The more I hear, the, the better it becomes. Listen, we have this audit. We're gonna go through it. There's some good things in it. There's a, a lot of things that we need to fix. Those are the things that we're hearing. Anything that you know about me, I really don't want to wait next year. I want to try to do things as quickly as possible, as much as I can actually do, as humanly possible. I hear what you're saying. I would never discourage a parent from being on any committee or speaking up. And really, I'm, I'm glad you speak up, and I'm glad you're so passionate, and you should be. If you weren't, and it's disappointing that we only have a few people that show up to Septo or any other special ed meetings. That, now, I don't know if that's because they're frustrated, but maybe I can eliminate that frustration. You know a lot of people. You can call me up and say, hey, listen, I have a group of whatever, twenty parents. You wanna meet me here? You just let me know the time. I will meet you here. Get me tomorrow night. I just said, call my office. You set up an appointment. I'd love to hear what you have to say. In a one-on-one, ten-on-one, I don't care, okay? But I don't want to wait till next year, and I understand your feelings. And I will, you believe me, that's one of our priorities, and I'm, I'm not one of these, listen, how long I stay here? I've already had it cleared, okay? And I understand, but I can hear what you're saying. I'm empathetic to it. And I, believe me, I will not put this to the back burner. And, and if, and if I do, you can call me the biggest BS artist ever, but I'm not. And I don't function that way. I believe with my heart, this is a big topic. This is something we need to fix. That's why I didn't have to wait. I could have waited for Corinne, Special Ed Director, to come first day of school. I didn't need to meet with her tomorrow. But I want to start setting up what we need to do immediately. And then we'll meet next week with Septo. I'll, I'll meet with anybody. But if, if you're saying what you want to say, you can get your group of whoever, and you set up a meeting with me. And I'll listen to you exactly what you have. I'll write down everything you say, and we'll try to attack it one step at a time. That's, that's the best I can do, and you could say, Frank, you're full of it. Okay, whatever, but if anybody knows me, I'm not full of it.
I don't want to be this egregious. I don't want it.
I want you to be.
The thing is, the, frankly, the burden of proof lies in your hands in the board. Please prove me wrong. Please prove many parents wrong that change is going to happen.
Well, I need your help. So if you go back to the background and don't express your feelings. Not any, not just. No, I, I understand that, but not, you didn't hear. I'm talking about talking to me one-on-one or ten-on-one, whoever you're involved with. I don't care. Okay, running out in a public session, that's fine, and we can hear you, and I'm listening to you. I'm not gonna, you know, throw you out.
There's, there's a, there's a terminology, there's a terminology that is used a lot. It's called nothing about us without us. And it has to do with the special ed's community and about people sitting in positions of power, making decisions for people who can't speak. So that's why the parents come forward, because we're speaking for who can't speak and represent. The other thing is, a lot of parents are disheartened because we've been in this era of acceptance, awareness and acceptance. But currently, if, if you don't know, you know, now everybody knows. Like, you know better, now we have to do that. It's like the era of action. We're done talking about it. We're done placating. We know what the problem is. We have to start making conscious actions.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay.
Nobody else on the list, or is there someone else that wants to speak?
Can I just clarify one question? Based on the previous conversation, so was that audit going to be given to the board members? Can that audit be given to the board members at this point?
You talking about the special ed audit?
Yes, the, yeah, the audit.
You talking about the special ed audit?
It was, I wasn't clear.
The superintendent has it. He says he's reviewing and he's sharing properly.
Can we get the, can we get the board, can we get this audit?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I've been asking for months.
Absolutely.
Sorry.
Well, he's on the chair.
I know, I'm not gonna say it again. I'm so sorry.
No, I know, I mean, it's been, it's been the biggest.
No, it's available, so you have.
And the superintendent just is here, and he said he's gonna share, and he just started reading it. So I think you meet, you said you're gonna meet the administrators?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and then share accordingly.
Why can't we see it all at the same time?
I have no idea.
This is my opinion.
Well. We'll make it, we'll make it available. It's not a problem. Yeah, it's not a big deal.
Can I just make a mention that I know people who said things are not here, I'm not gonna mention their names, but when this audit was presented and being conducted, we, parents were told that we would get the results of the audit. And not a summary, not a redacted version. I mean, you have to protect it. There's specifics to names and employees. I understand that. But we were promised the second one you want to go through.
What's the date on this report? Can I ask that? Did you notice, was there a date on this report or anything somewhere?
September, October of last year?
Are you kidding me?
And it just became available now?
I've been at, I, I have proof.
Okay, Lisa, yeah.
Okay, three, three.
Uh, you had a, you had a question for, Frank, you had a question for Dr. Lawrence?
Not that I saw, but, you know.
It's only, you just got it. Okay, so these, these. Okay. Okay, there's, there's no problem. Share it. No problem.
How about, do we, can we get like a publicly available copy of this?
I think it's because he writes, so we're sure there's no need, but yes, I would think that the public should be able to access it.
Yeah. Give us a chance tomorrow.
We'll, we'll get to, get to say.
All right, very good.
Share it?
Yeah. That's a good idea. Okay, um, is everybody, okay, thank you. Thank you for participation tonight. The, I'm gonna entertain a motion to go into executive session. To convene executive to discuss matters that may lead to appointment or appointment of particular person, persons. And we also have, we also have legal advice, legal advice. So can I get a motion to go into executive session, please? Vice President DeSoto, second. Trustee Itona, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Public, thank you so much. I appreciate it.